Down the road, you want to change that, we can always alter this.
Any questions for Jill?
My request tonight is to to approve the ordinance as presented with the with the changes.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance as in our packet with those changes? Do I have a second?
Second minute.
All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thanks Jill.
Thank you.
You too.
Moving on to annexation ordinance to extend the town's corporate limits. Diane?
Okay, uh, this is the final process that um that needed to come before the board, which was um adopt the ordinance to extend if you indeed so desire. Uh, once this motion action is taken tonight, then um the applicant will be notified. Uh, I think it's her intentions that she's got property of sale and they were waiting on this action to take place. Uh, and then of course, we have to let all respective persons know such as uh, Reshir Deans, um the state government, everybody involved, land development, everyone involved. This is the final process to an executive petition.
Questions for Diane?
Something that you follow state that.
No, not to approve it. It's just once it's done about.
Cause they'll they'll go through and change all the GIS layers and official maps of, you know, boundary maps and things.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the extension of the town's corporate limits as described?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on to new business. Um, the first item here is the appointment of finance officer.
Um, as you know, it's November year ago, actually. Uh, Missy Haygood, our finance director left for higher elevations and greener pastures perhaps. And we started a process of looking for a new finance director. We're closely with uh, the Barham AP person and she stepped in as uh stepped in with me to help make sure that everything was happening the way it needed to happen while we were searching. We went through a couple of interview processes and never found anybody who uh would would fit the bill for us. That took five, six months maybe and uh what Kathy didn't know was during that period, I was doing a quiet interview with her. Uh, I was watching her grow, watching her grow into the position. Watching her talent as things came up that she had no idea about. And nailing down the issues and figuring out how to take care of business. And it became clear that she was a person that that I want I could work with. And one thing to do well by the town. And we had all the capabilities that we were looking for, uh, that she was growing and developing while we were looking for them. I came to you about six months ago. Asked and let you know that I was appointing her as kind of an interim finance director. You know, we could get that department up to speed with the other positions that we are dealing with. So that um Kathy would not have interview day with maybe public money, you know, there's all sorts of internal security issues. And you never want to have the same person doing A to Z when it comes to money. And so we divvied that up. Kathy has now filled the positions we needed to fill. Kathy has trained them so they are able to do the job. Certainly with her oversight without her daily hands on. And uh, now is the time to to for me for me to step aside from being your finance officer. And turn those duties over to Kathy. It is a it is an official appointment of the board. Designate it designate it designates it to the state who our finance officer will be. So I brought it to you this evening for you to vote to Kathy Barham as our new finance officer. She will take all the reins of of that department forward. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve Kathy as our new finance officer?
Yes.
Okay.
One second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then you know Kathy has to take the oath. He has her personal Bible.
I'm gonna scoot out of the way.
Do you want your family members to join?
Oh, please. My lovely, beautiful family.
We still family.
Um, I would like to introduce y'all to my husband Chuck Born and then my son-in-law, Tom. And then my oldest daughter Kaylee and her significant other Dustin.
Awesome, awesome. Yeah, are you gonna let one of them hold your Bible for you? You guys face me now? It's me, please.
My good daughter, I just go where she pointed.
Okay, I got you, I got you. Okay. I'm a V-Lon, oh, a finance officer. I'm gonna say a statement. If I pause, you state your name and then you just repeat what I say.
Okay, fine.
I
Kathy Born.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of.
And the Constitution of.
The state of North Carolina.
The state of North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I
Kathy Born.
Do further swear or affirm.
Do further swear or affirm.
That I will execute the duties.
That I will execute the duties.
A finance officer for the town of Elon.
A finance officer for the town of Elon.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
According to the best of my.
According to the best of my.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, that's all you gotta do.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Everybody, yeah. I'll send you all this, okay? Thank you. And thank you very much, Ms. Rich. And I I plan to serve you as well.
As you have.
As you have. It may be noted that I know she started at seven thirty early this morning, so.
Yes.
Good start. Well, she knew she was gonna stay late tonight, so.
George, thank you. Thank you. So appreciate it.
All right, well.
If I could just.
Yeah.
Monty, your comment about Kathy being here early.
Yeah.
That has been a year-long tradition for her that I'm hoping we're getting away from. I honestly, uh, working fifty-five, sixty-hour weeks, uh, learning the job. Keeping on on the finances for the town. She's done a real yeoman's task uh over the last year, so.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, we did. Sleeping just a little bit.
I've just looked, I've been keeping the horse's tail up. Rich, thank you to you as well for all your hard work doing this too. And Kathy.
You are welcome to stay or you are welcome to go, whichever you prefer.
We're gonna celebrate.
Yeah, yeah, they're treating me.
You got it. It's the appropriate place to go for a finance.
Right, moving on to committees and board appointments. That meet.
Well, let me just say this much. But what I did is uh, run your request. Is invited everyone that has submitted an application of interest. Even our uh persons that applied early on and we've already met them. We wanted you here again tonight and thank you for being here on such a short notice. And so the town council would like to speak with you and help to you about this position, your positions.
Thank you. Um, yes, so we're we're all kind of figuring out how we initiate a new committee because I don't think anyone up here. Have you ever initiated a new committee? Yeah. Um, so we're kind of figuring it out as some of you have realized. Um, so we are working on a more formalized process and this is kind of the beginning of that. So we really appreciate that you've taken the time to be here this evening. So we do have two applications that have been received for the arts advisory board. Um, and both of those applicants have attended um one of the meetings. So Jill, um, did you have anything to say or anything about? How many um spots do you have open on your board currently?
Actually, I think we're full now, so unfortunately Karen was unable to attend. She um is ill. Um, and she was unable to attend. Maybe she spent um several years in the school system and the art world. I feel very fortunate to have had two extremely qualified individuals uh apply to be on this board. We have a a great board. Lane is here. Uh, he's sitting right here. And I will let him just give you a quick, if you don't mind, a rundown. Um, again, he's got a a lot of knowledge and experience with larger towns. I think he will be a great asset for us.
We'd love to hear a little bit about you.
Can I just speak from here?
Sure.
Absolutely.
I've been in Alamance County about thirty years. Half of that probably involved in the arts locally. I'm a fine art photographer. Uh, primarily worked in show and galleries and do art fairs and that type of stuff. Uh, eight years ago, moved to Kernersville for professional reasons. Um, and and just moved back within the last six months. While I was there, I was actually the founding members of the Fine Arts, excuse me, Public Art Commission uh for Forsyth County in Winston-Salem. Learned a lot of good things. I'm not sure how applicable it's gonna be to Elon. Uh, see different challenges here than we had there, but uh I'm excited to uh become part of it. I'm a big proponent of public art. I think there's a lot of value to having public art in a community. And I'm pleased since I'm now a resident of Elon that this is happening. I'd like to be part of it.
We appreciate that.
Any any questions for Lane?
I do have a question, I guess, for Jill because obviously not all of us have certain, or none of us have certain. What are the typical role of a committee member and how often do you do you meet in?
Yes, we're meeting once a month. Kathleen had started the committee back and then literally COVID hit. So one of the projects that had been talked about for a couple of years was the sidewalk or the crosswalk project, which is why I came in. And Quinn says, let's just get, let's make this happen. We've been talking about it and talking about it, so. And then the other was the fire hydrant project, which we're gonna talk about at our next meeting. The initial idea was to have artists out in the community paint the fire hydrants. And there was a call to artists and not a great response on that. And I have done that project like that in Reedsville. It's really more of a community project. This how it really kind of flavors out even better is having different members of the community and maybe some art students at the college or just different variety of groups that paint the hydrants. So we're gonna discuss that at our next meeting and talk about some future projects. We do really want to uh put some funds in the budget next year for public art in front of town hall. So and uh just kind of come up with some other ideas of how to involve students from the university and how how much they can give to us in terms of doing um art displays of their artwork once our plaza is built and really utilizing um what we have right here. So we're throwing around a lot of different ideas, but I think there's with these two members, like I said, Karen was in the public school system. And she has done um, you know, public art contests and all those types of things. So she has a lot of experience at that level, so these two would be a great addition to our board.
Here in the morning.
If you've never been inside the Alamance News Building, they have an excellent mural that we could replicate right here on our walls. It's an old bar. So there's, it's very interesting, the old mural in that building. Um, and you are requesting that we appoint both Karen and Lane to the um arts advisory board this evening?
They came to our our last meeting and I think everybody, I wish Quinn were here because he was at that meeting as well. And we all felt really good about having cutting these two onto our to our board.
And for the notes, we should just point out that um Councilman Ray is not here.
I just assumed, because.
That's an inside joke for you all. Um, okay, well, do I have a motion to approve uh both Karen Wiener and Lane Watson onto the arts advisory board? And do I have a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. You are welcome to stay or go, whatever, you know, if you're looking for some Tuesday evening entertainment, you've come to the right. Um, moving on to the sustainability committee. Um, so this committee actually stemmed from um an organization actually led by our own councilperson. Um, not a councilperson at the time, Randy Orwig. Um, regarding sustainability and the desire for the town to really, you know, look into what can be done from a sustainability point of view and how can we do a better job? And really doing some of the research and coming up with a solid plan that is um relevant and feasible to the town of Elon. So that is a major charge for this group that um I think Randy is going to be serving, although we haven't done those appointments yet for next year. Um, but we finally do have five applicants. Um, so that we can hopefully get this one off the ground. So we're really excited about that. Um, so Adam Shaw, I know that we have already met you and um we we kind of did the whole, you know, dog and pony show before, but if you'd just tell us about yourself for everyone in the room and we'd just love to hear that.
I'm currently a network project manager with the systems. Um, I think part of that program. Part of the job is we have a sustainability. Uh, we do network installs for campus facilities and things like that. So as we have a a life cycle for this equipment, we need to find sustainable this for that. And we also green programs where we're trying to do smart buildings. Uh, rubber internet installs uh sun, automatic sun shading, solar film, all kinds of things like that, cutting-edge technology. So I've had an opportunity to be exposed to that. I was in the Navy and and then power programs, so I have a little background there. Um, also went to grad school. And part of the core program was sustainable development within conflict, conflict associated with lack of sustainability and a variety of systems, whether it's socio-economic or environmental.
Any questions for Adam?
Thank you for coming again.
You've been patiently waiting.
Thank you for that. Okay, we have Dennis Pagano. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thank you so much for being here. Would you just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interests?
Let's see. Moved to North Carolina about forty-plus years ago and lived in the Chapel Hill area. Uh, where I worked with the National Institute Environmental Health Sciences and then retired from the Environmental Protection Agency. And then moved to uh Twin Lakes, the Alamance County and got to become good friends with Randy. Wife with ear and a son who lives in Chapel Hill and has a position at UNC, grandson. And uh, I'm kind of looking forward to this idea of the project and how knowing somewhat the limitations of the community, the size of the community and the budget of the community and what we can do. That will keep us within some bounds. But um, I'm looking forward to contributing to the whatever knowledge I have gained over the course of time to uh see if we can move Elon in the direction of being um a more sustainable community.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Thank you for being here. And then we have Lamont Tyson.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. How about yourself?
Good. Lamont lives in my neighborhood, so I have the pleasure of having met him.
I've got the cheapest house in her neighborhood.
Not true. Lamont, will you just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the sustainability committee?
Yep, ma'am. My name is Lamont Tyson. I'm originally from Greenville, North Carolina. I moved here in two thousand and six to be outpatient respiratory therapist for kids with special needs. Um, independent practice, first African-American male to open that type of business. Um, but a dream of sustainability started for me being a poor kid watching Captain Planet, believe it or not. Um, and while he was showing everybody how to be sustainable, a lot of people in my neighborhood was just worried about eating. But I had an imagination and a creativity that was something I wanted to do. And along comes a doctor that I married who had the same vision. And so we started following how to be sustainable. We was listening to a guy named Clark Howard on how you can take these measures, use solar, use EV. Really reduce your power bill, but be contributing to a better planet. And so we also heard about a place in Florida called Babcock Ranch near Fort Myers. Uh, forty-five thousand people, think it's three times the size of Elon. They're completely off the grid. They survived a category four hurricane because their battery is backed up from the solar that they use to last forty-five days if it blacks out. And so when I saw that, I was like, honey, we don't own a city, but we own a home. Why don't we retrofit our home similar? And so we did that and we drive EV cars. We have a solar panel on our home that you can click a button on our phone from an app um to see how much energy you're generating with the wind speeds and all this other great stuff. So there is pretty affordable technology out here nowadays that can be modeled. And I don't see why Elon couldn't become a beacon of not only sustainability, but of a place for people to visit similar to Babcock, Florida. Um, that people want to model and make their city similar to this. So that's why I'm here.
Any questions for Lamont?
Excited.
Feel like we got the A-team here.
Right, and we have Emerson Wells.
She's not here tonight. And uh, another correction, Emily. Again, it's it's the I issue. I'm gonna blame it on the I front, Sam. Uh, Peter, Livia, Livia, he, um, he put down uh to join the committee for equality.
Okay.
So I I I put him on the wrong squad.
Okay. All right, so we currently have Adam Shaw, Dennis Pagano, Lamont Tyson and Emerson Wells, which we do have her information on here as well. Says experience with sustainability initiatives through an institutional lens at Elon University, specifically through outreach work, recognition and understanding of sustainability as an intersectional issue related to environmental, social and economic systems. Um, experience with sustainability, community outreach in Alamance County. And several other um things that she shared on here, so looking forward to having the opportunity to meet her as well. So, um, Rich, would you recommend that we appoint um all four members or just the three that are here today?
I think probably all four, if that's, you know, that's fine.
Let me ask a question because because with any other committee, I I certainly appreciate everybody coming out. Um, do we have to set up a staggered tenure, like two years? Or is it a renewable one year because it's like the planning board, which has been around for a while?
Yeah.
If you have some continuity or you have the ability for new people to come in and own.
May I share? Okay, so with all of our commit committees, we have them staggered. And yes, I would agree. Emily and I and our attorney are working on the boards and commission committee policies and how that looks. So it's a it's a work in progress.
We don't have to do that now.
You don't have to do it.
That's that's why I was hoping we didn't say it.
We can determine their
Two years.
We can determine their term limits, one thing.
And and I think too, is there a difference, Rich, in how we approach a board versus a committee as well?
Something like the planning board does have state law behind it or the Board of Adjustment and you don't use the planning board. So yeah, those, I mean, there there is state law behind that. These are committees that you are creating for, in some cases, a task. We had the rec- we had the recreation committee or the recreation plan and did that. They then disbanded. You know, in this case, these, you know, these might be longer lived than that. And as they, if they become permanent committees, then you'd certainly want to look at staggering the terms. Um, maybe formalizing them through language, either in the code or in in, you know, policy to to uh set them up a little bit more than just a resolution. So, you know, you it's, these are your creations. Uh, so you know, how you how you treat them or how you deal with them is certainly entirely up to the board right now.
So and I know we'll be talking about that at our retreat as well. Okay, then do I have a motion to approve the four individuals um listed here? With Adam Shaw, Dennis Pagano, Lamont Tyson and Rebecca Emerson Wells to the Sustainability Committee. Um, which will also, I believe, have Randy on it once we get through our board, our council appointments as well.
Still moved.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor say aye. All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome. We will be in touch. Um, we have a um council retreat on the twenty-first where we will hopefully be kind of we're formalizing all of our processes and standards going forward and then hopefully voting those in. Um, and are following that, so I would anticipate that you should hear from someone with the town within the next couple of weeks so that we can start looking at timeline for meeting. And you're welcome to stay or go. Yes, Adam.
I just wanted to get the idea, will there be a predefined scope? About goals going into this that we can prepare for or?
I think so, in my opinion, and we can give some more direction, you know, when we reach out as well. But this is a new committee and when this committee was, when we as a board, and it was a different board than, um, what, four years ago?
Thousand nineteen, thousand nineteen, I think.
Oh, only that long ago, okay. Um, the goal was, you know, before we look at passing a resolution around sustainability, we want to know what we can actually do. So we would love for the committee to, you know, determine what what can be done. What are some of those things that are easier to be done in a short-term manner? What are some of the things that are gonna take things that are maybe out of our control? Um, you know, and how how do we advocate for that? Maybe it's, you know, we meet with some of our state leaders or whomever. Um, and then also what technology is available? Because I know um after that, there were concerns around there's not a fire truck right now out there that would be considered sustainable, for example. Um, when it comes to police vehicles, um, there's none, correct me if I'm wrong. There are none currently outfitted for that, but some towns have maybe not that successfully outfitted themselves, right? With um Teslas and otherwise. So, you know, coming to us and saying, this is what we think. So, you know, coming to us and saying, this is what we think you can do. And if that means that the group would also like to bring forward a resolution, you know, based off of that research, then we can certainly explore that. And I think it's really open to the committee to say, this is what is feasible for the town of Elon and what we think can be. That answer your question, Adam?
Yes.
Okay, so let's move on to the ordinance and policy review committee for.
Equity.
That's what I'm doing. It says on here, the ordinance and policy review committee for equality. That's not what we called it.
Diversity. Belonging.
And belonging, yes.
I'm just. Down.
Peter was trying to leave and I told him, wait just a minute.
No, I'm sorry. Hey. And this is our diversity, equality, and belonging committee. This too will be a newly formed committee that will. Look at our ordinances and our staff policies to determine if we if we are doing so through. I call it Jedi lens. So justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion. But then also, what might the town be able to do in that area as well? And, you know, maybe researching what some other small towns with small staff. Has been able to accomplish because one of the concerns initially around an orphanage. In this area was the fact that we have a very small staff and how do we handle that? Knowing that we don't have a staff person to take on an additional task that could become quite large. And so that that's really part of it. So the goals are listed in our packet. So evaluate municipal policies. Policies and ordinances for discriminatory impacts. Create a forum for public input and to make recommendations to the town council for any future actions related to any discrimination within the community. So we do have Peter here with us this evening, so I'm sorry that it's taken so long. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in this committee?
I did want to be the chairman, but I want to work on the committee. So.
We have others.
I think it's very important. My son is very into diversity and I think it's very important. That this town, the city, should all be all together. And have any, have any problems with each other. So I would like to get on that, but I think it's very important.
Any questions?
I apologize. I haven't seen your background. What is it that draws you into wanting to do this work?
Well, I'm Irish. And. Notre Dame fan. I think.
We accept you anyway.
Okay. I think I'd just like to be part of.
Your inclusion.
Plan to where everybody is equal and everybody works together and make the success together has to be all together. And. Never acted that way and I won't do that way again ever. So that's why I'm a part of it.
And then Rose Cooper is joining us for the second time. So we thank you for that. So would you just share a little bit about yourself and your interests in the committee?
Sure. I've lived in this area for thirty years and raised my kids here. In my career, I served as. Working with children and families in human services and also human resources, which is my practice for thirty-plus years. So I've always had an interest in diversity, inclusion, and that was my job. Social justice issues, advocating for children and families who are marginalized, children who. Were out of their homes due to circumstances beyond their controls, reuniting families. And as I've come along in my career, I've worked with other towns, town of Chapel Hill, some of their committees. Early in my career, United Way, Junior Achievement is always my goal to just work in the community, try to make things better. And just to. As he said, same thing he said, just try to advocate for folks, some who may not know how to speak up. And try to prevent some things. And as you said something, seeing things through another lens. And so I think when everybody works together to do that, we can all live as human beings on the planet. Exist peacefully and happily, hopefully.
Any questions? And then I also have Adam on this one as well. So Adam, are you just trying to be an overachiever that you asked for both or?
They were asking for volunteers. I said either one, but for sustainability, if I may.
Awesome. All right, so that leaves us with three individuals. Who have volunteered for the diversity equity belonging committee. So what I would suggest is. Maybe we assign two of our full members. Is that okay? So we can have five?
Sure.
Great. So do I have a motion to approve Peter, Wendy, and Rose to the diversity, equity, and belonging committee? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So I think for the same thing, probably two weeks and we'll get something out to hopefully find a time for. Some sort of doodle poll or something to find a good time to get everybody together. And I think. Best if the committee work with a staff member assigned to the committee to determine what works best for meeting time versus us dictating that. So.
I would, we've, we haven't always been successful or sometimes it takes a while to to get volunteers for things. Nine people have stepped up tonight. That my knowledge have not been involved in town ongoing efforts in the past. So. I think this is a great thing. It certainly does broaden the impact of what the town is doing with the community and. And brings and helps the community impact the board. So I think it's a, it's great that we have this many folks who have stepped up.
I'm very excited.
Thank you so much. Yeah, let's get around. Well, we don't have too much more on the agenda, but you all are welcome to stay or go, whichever you would prefer. All right, so let's go ahead. Let me find the agenda in my, in my back of papers here. Hold on. I gotta get to it. Okay. So next on the agenda are twenty twenty-three town council appointments. A draft has been shared with the board. So we just wanted to open that up for any discussion. There's, I know I do need to remove former staff. People, that's what those little boxes are. Those are the comments of who we would want to. Replace those individuals with. But an additional thing that has been brought to my attention is that with the multimodal planning grant that we received or are receiving. We do need to establish a committee for that as well. So I would like to just open it up to see if. There is any interest. I've already shared with Rich, who I thought would be a good fit. Based off of their frequent use of multimodal access to town, but.
Oh, I'm.
Anybody, anybody. So.
This is the kind of stuff that's exciting.
What would that group, can you give us like timeline, timeframe?
Actually, I think Jill has just put out the.
Lori. Okay.
Well, she's just put out a notice about looking for volunteers for this committee. The planning, the study will actually be run by DOT.
Okay.
They will hire a contractor with, you know, we'll have some input, but it'd be their contractor. We send DOT our money. A local committee, they are shooting, they estimate it's about a year commitment. Could be, if everything fell into place, it could be ten months, you know, it could be fourteen or sixteen months of things, you know, take longer to work out than others. The goal, it's a multimodal. Study committee looking at pedestrian, bicycle, and transit issues. That's the overriding. Call or charge for that kind of a committee study. And so we will be looking for volunteers. We've gone back and forth and I'm not sure what the what the number we came up with. I suspect it was either seven or nine, ideally, that. Folks who could represent, you know, wide range of the population, those who would, you know, who are walkers, who are bikers. Who would benefit from transit, who don't think we need transit or, you know, the whole range because it's a community-wide effort. And like I said, that'll be a year to a year and a half. We get this report back from the state. There will be public meetings, you know, public workshops, draft reports, kind of that, that. You know, standard planning process of soliciting input from the community, reporting back with what the findings, you know, the draft findings are. Getting another round of input and then finalizing plans.
Rich, does this have, is this connective to the link? We decided to move forward with the link. Do we have to wait for this study to be done or anything? That's not, okay, I want to make sure.
One of the things that may come out of that are suggestions on how to improve that connection with link or, you know. Gee, you know, you're excluding a population or, you know, whatever. I mean, that's the idea is. These three stops are great. How about these nine kind of thing?
Will it take into consideration the bike pedestrian and lighting plan that we had done?
That's some of the background. That's some of the background. So, yeah.
Were you on that committee?
I think that was two thousand seventeen. That came, it was updated in two thousand seventeen. I think it was like two thousand eight or two thousand nine, the seventeen update.
I'm just looking at other appointments. The LMO, what is the timeline? I mean, how much longer are we going to be working on the LMO?
The. The. When we switch contractors and obviously our staff planner. Who was involved with it took a step back and is, you know, took another job as working on much reduced hours. The goal was to have a draft in hand by December. I suspect we're not going to hit that, although. How many more chapters are to go? Did you know offhand?
Three or four, I think.
I thought it was fewer than that, but okay. If it's three or four, we certainly won't be meeting December.
I know this is somewhat off topic, but since we're discussing LMO right now. To me, as a person who was also assigned to that committee. I'm concerned that we started it so long ago. I don't even remember what we put in it. Have you seen any of those early chapters since we discussed them?
Going back, revisit them.
I haven't, yeah. I mean, we haven't even seen like the revised versions of those yet.
Okay. I. I. I, I, that was based on the point. I think part of it is they're trying to get. Get it done before they start going back and then, you know, addressing all the comments. And, you know, they did have the work of the previous consultant on those early chapters. I think they've actually gone back and redone some of those already. I don't think they've redone everything they, he had, the previous contractor had done, but. You know, they are making progress. They are creating the chapters as they go along. It's just, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a slow process. I'm figuring that hopefully by late January, we might be having a solid draft. Do you think, Monty, or not?
I'm not that optimistic.
Okay.
Not at the rate we're going now with meeting every other month.
Our last meeting was September?
Okay, I thought you had one since then. Maybe that's a conversation you can have, see how we can.
Yeah. And I know Lori is going through all of the chapters, but she's playing catch-up as well as, you know, whatever new is coming along and. She's reviewing the current drafts as well as the old ones to. She'll be the one who's administering it. So she's up bringing perhaps different thoughts to the table than were there initially.
We wanted to have this accomplished, obviously because the state's requiring this, right? Was supposed to have been December. They're gonna put us in any jeopardy?
I, I'm unaware of that. I knew our deadline was December. I was, I didn't realize that was the state deadline.
I'm not sure, but maybe that's a conversation with Pam.
Yeah, I. You know, certainly there are target deadlines and you are. Their target deadlines. I don't know if it's a hard and fast, gee, you haven't done it, therefore. Close up shop or anything like that. The reasons why it's taking us a lot longer than what we planned.
Yeah. Okay. I was asking because if Monty is going to drop off of LMO. This year or early next year and just having that history with the other.
I'm fine with doing that. Even now, we started it now. I'm fine. I think the overlap is going.
Any, anybody have other thoughts on that? Because. There's a line.
Yeah.
And then Randy, you'll be working on the Committee on Sustainability, which is getting off the ground. And then. Stephanie, I have you Committee for Diversity, Equity, and Belonging. If we're going to assign a second person to that.
Quinn would be the one, won't you think?
Yeah, I'm thinking Quinn because he has that alternate treasurer role, which.
That big.
Yeah.
The other thing is, is that he was really behind a lot of the stuff that was working toward the equity.
Yeah.
So I think it would.
All right, so we'll add that. And then for the planning board. I think these are fairly tentative because I'm not sure if the planning board will be having any changes to their schedule based on holidays or anything, but. I just took the months that we were each assigned this year and then just updated the dates. I'm not sure, you know, what anybody else feels about it, but I found it to be helpful. But when I was able to join the planning board, just to hear their thoughts and everything as well. Any other?
It's just when you have so many months in between, sometimes you forget and that's, that's what worries me. So I'm going to make special notes on this to make sure I don't, don't forget. It doesn't mean we can't come to other meetings. It's just.
Right, yeah.
That's our responsibility, so.
Because I mean, they're public, so anybody, anybody can come. Even if all of us showed up, we just can't be involved in the conversation, so. And then the appointments that are still on hold are the Appearance Commission, Recreation and Parks Commission, and Line of Agreement. Also, it appears that the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities, because we're not even sure what. That does at this point, because we did the whole ADA assessment and we kind of feel like maybe it's a little sunset, at least.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think you said, and the debt committee met a couple of times when Richard White was here, but. That's, I don't think it's met five years or more.
I'll just move that to the appointments on hold section and. Maybe we can look at that further and see what else needs to be done, if anything, on that. And you said that you are going to have Jill attend the Economic Development. And you said that you are going to, um, have Jill attend the Economic Development Committee meetings, the Almanch Chamber meeting?
That would be my thought, yes.
Okay, and then, um, the Neighborhood Coalition, to my knowledge, is not currently meeting, but if it does, you would recommend Lori? All right, any other thoughts on these? I don't, this is not a vote, right? It's an appointment, so I'll just send up a final list and. Consider yourselves appointed. Okay, thank you all. Um, all right, next on the agenda, proposed twenty twenty-three Town Council meeting schedule, so. I put this together, um, just based off of. Some things that have come up this year specifically around holidays, so. Um, for example, our December meeting this year, I believe, is, if we follow our schedule, it's on Christmas Day, right? So we're obviously not going to.
Monday is on December twenty-sixth, because this year Christmas is on Sunday.
But a lot of individuals are probably still going to be celebrating, so.
And under our policy, that's a town holiday.
Right, yeah.
Closed.
Yeah, so I wanted to just proactively look at those dates so that it's not something that, oh. It's gonna be December twenty-sixth when we're supposed to meet, so. What I did was I looked at the calendar. Um, one other thing, well, there's a couple of things that I think we should consider, so. Rich and Diane, when we, um, when I met with the two of them to discuss our policies and procedures and all of that, that we're going to be working through at the retreat. Um, we wanted to just make sure that everybody wants to continue to do the second Tuesday and the fourth Monday. I'm certainly fine with that, but I think it has caused some confusion around. Is this the Tuesday meeting or is it the Monday meeting, but. I'm fine with keeping it that way, we did determine that it is not in our town charter that we have to meet on the second Tuesday. Um, but it is something that we have always done, so I think it's open.
I'm in favor of keeping it as it is.
I am too, yeah. You mean, what the dates does she put on there? Or just keep them?
The second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday and the first Monday, generally, that's what these dates are. There are three notations where they have been moved. Um, so we have, um, what would have typically been scheduled on April eleventh, I suggested rescheduling. Um, due to both Passover and local spring breaks on that week. Um, to Tuesday, April the fourth, which would be the first Tuesday. Um, keeping in mind that that means that we meet on a Monday and then, you know, eight days later. So that's something that I think we should discuss, and then. Um, what would typically be scheduled on September twenty-fifth, um, I'm suggesting that we reschedule to avoid Yom Kippur. Um, so we would have that one on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth instead. And then, um, obviously, we wouldn't meet on Christmas, which is. Why I also think we shouldn't meet on Yom Kippur either, and.
Christmas Day in twenty twenty-three is Monday, you were right.
Right.
I just meant this year.
And then, um, so I'm suggesting that we bump that up a week. Um, we will have the same instance where we're meeting a week between meetings, but. You know, if there's not business to be done, it can be canceled as well, but.
It's, it's actually the reverse, because it's six days instead of.
Oh, yeah, so it's.
Goes from Tuesday to Monday rather than.
Turnaround.
Yeah.
Um, so we could. Just cancel, but I hate to cancel and then something come up and then we have to reschedule, I'd rather. Have it on a schedule and then if we don't need it, cancel it. But. Any thoughts?
Well, first of all, I appreciate you recognizing the Jewish holidays of Passover and Yom Kippur, because we did. More meeting on Yom Kippur this year, so I do appreciate that. Passover, really, the celebration is the fifth and sixth.
Okay.
So it, it continues for a week, but if we need some flexibility there, I do think though, one thing would be, it does fall during Spring Break for most people. Um, that, that eleventh meeting, and I think you mentioned that in your notation, so we may want to just stick with what you have planned. Um, Yom Kippur, those are very important Jewish holidays, so I, as, as well as perhaps the public that we want to attend. Um, do appreciate the change in that, so thank you.
And in full transparency, although I was a full-time nanny. In grad school for two Jewish families, and I have three Jewish babysitters from Elon University, I did not know that Yom Kippur was the holiest day on the Jewish calendar. And I felt terrible.
You shouldn't feel terrible, you should feel terrible, it's all learned, it's.
But, you know.
Learning thing for everybody.
But. We wouldn't, we wouldn't fathom of having a meeting on Christmas Day, so in my opinion, we shouldn't fathom having a meeting on Yom Kippur.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any thoughts? And of course, you know, if you want to just, you know, the two, the April one. Um, I think I'm the only one with school-aged children.
No, me too.
Oh, yeah, same schedule, same school, right?
No.
Um. So there's just, we might be here and we might not. Don't know.
I think this is a good template and that we can follow and we always have flexibility if need be like that. You know, April and certainly, you know, December as well, so this looks, it's good to me.
Um, so I believe that by statute, we have to adopt the schedule at our first December meeting. So we'll have that on the agenda.
Y'all know early.
Yes, you, you go ahead, I'm sorry.
Your calendar's done for next year.
Okay.
Repeat the details on the twenty-first. Coming up.
Oh, this.
When did it start, where's it at?
What time does it start?
Uh.
I think it's a little TBD still, but we're starting now.
I, I, I'm not logged into the networks, I can't call up the agenda. Did you send it to us? Yeah, it was, oh, I sent it to Emily, um, I think it starts at nine. Uh, break at noon for lunch, and then in the afternoon, I, I mean, I think the department has to come in for the afternoon. Come in for lunch, whatever, and, and. Then they'll be with us rest of the day. Morning, we would talk about strategic planning, or your strategic plan, talk about, uh, rules and procedures for the board. Um, there's a couple of the items in there that would, I think we can dispense with in, in pretty short order. Uh, and then the afternoon, we talk about, uh, some of the long-range capital issues that we've. We know we're dealing with that, that we need to. We need to look at closely, uh, from the department level, from your level. Um, and then, uh, wrap up by looking at Nancy. What are the things that we, you know, we want to. How do we want to prioritize things? And, and, you know, we, we, we kind of touched on this in the past, that. I mean, all right, let's put that off a year or two, well, maybe some things we have to prop for ten years. And at least get it out of the annual debate, uh, as to whether we're actually gonna. Physical, physically or fiscally impossible for us to achieve something in five years, make more sense to. Put it at ten years and, and shoot for it that way. Obviously, there, there's limits of what we can afford in our annual budget. You know, we may see growth in the future, that might help. Might not, who knows what the economy is going to do in two, three years. Different avenues for raising capital through, you know, through, through borrowing or bonding. Those will be some questions that we can touch on. Following the retreat, we have Mitch Bruglio from Davenport. Who's advised the, the, the town on financial issues and borrowing issues, uh, for the last several years, will be with us on the twenty-eighth. To follow up with your discussion at the retreat to say, all right, now that you, you know, you've started looking at what some of your priorities are. Let's, that's really take a hard look and see which ones we can accomplish in what kind of a timeframe. From a financial standpoint.
Location, do we have a location yet for the meetings?
Our default is here, if nothing else is, you know, but we were going to talk to Impact Almants. See if we couldn't utilize their facility. At Burlington. And another option would be, you know, the CLC classroom available. Forced to use that day of, you know, the third option.
Um, you know what time you're thinking for end time?
I, I don't recall, I mean. Uh, full day, yeah, full day, so I don't know if it was four thirty-five.
So you'll just let us know.
Yes. Well, and that's one of the things that we need to finalize, you know, Thursday is, you know, what. In our agenda, we'll be now, it's, it's, it's in a draft form right now, we just need to finalize it before we send it out to everyone.
And on the agenda, are we going to include, um, some of the comments that we heard from the?
Um, you will have that.
Okay.
Um, not anticipating ha- having that be a focus of the discussion during that day, only because. Take up a good part of the day. I've, uh, gotten comments back from. Department heads that I'm finalizing everything, and then I sent it to you. And we'll have it on, uh, an agenda either at the end of this month, the first of December. Amendments to the, the draft responses are adopted. And. I will get it to you before we have our retreat, so that you can see the written comments we got, so that. Might help influence what, you know, what gets identified as priorities.
Onto reports, Town Manager.
Um, Jill had mentioned a little earlier when she was speaking, um. We were the recipients of a sculpture from Almants Arts. And prior to meeting tonight, we, uh, take the tarp off of it and, uh, open it to the world. It is a, it's a. Globe with, um. Kaleidoscopes attached to it, and, and then a planting in the center, that planting, um, bowl actually spins. So you, you, so when you're looking at it, you can spin it and the kaleidoscope gives it a real interesting view of, of, you know, the different textures and colors of the plants. And so it's a, our, our, as Jill said earlier, our third installment of, uh, public art here in town. First doll said, the first permanent installation of public art, because paint will certainly fade, but, uh. Good step forward in, uh. In, in bringing that to, to Deftown Elon. And the other comment I'll make is Friday is Veterans Day, we will be closed, town offices will be closed. Our veterans.
Any questions for Rich? Right, moving on to Town Council comments or reports, so Stephanie?
Um, I actually don't have anything, although I, I would say I'm very excited about the Diversity Equity and Belonging Committee, and I'm so thankful for the folks that are willing to. To be a part of that, I was just in LA and it sounds like I'm name dropping, but overall. Um, I, I had the pleasure of meeting with the head of Diversity Equity Inclusion for Disney Animation. Um, he's the executive vice president there, and he's been with Disney for years and years and years, and so we had a. Hour and a half breakfast, which I couldn't leave much time with him, um, to talk about these very issues. Um, you know, there's a different lens when you're talking about a corporation than you are a community. Um, but it, it was fascinating from his experiences. Um, in the corporate world as well as his experiences being a, a man of color. Um, and looking at these different ideas, so I'm really just very excited to work with our community and so glad that we are bringing this to the forefront. Um, thankful to the people that are willing to take their time to spend on this, so.
And I, Randy?
I just want to equally say that I'm excited to have the Sustainability Committee ready to go. And I'm hoping it won't get held up too much longer. Um, because I think we do have a lot of work, you, I think there's a lot of ways that we can. Express, um, policies or, or policy recommendations, support, things for the future of the town, so. We've been hoping for this for quite a while, thank you for. Sorry. Also, just, uh, make an announcement that there will be a community-wide Thanksgiving service at seven o'clock. Twenty-second at Elon First Baptist Church. Be a part of that, we would like to make sure that you want to play a part and, uh. Offerings for the food pantry there at the.
It's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Beats.
Yeah, I like to. Keep you back on what you said, I appreciate all the volunteers that came out tonight, and I just hope you'll be patient, because obviously with the formation of a new committee. As you said, what are the goals, what are the expectations, so. Be patient, uh, realize that Rome was created in a day and change doesn't always happen as quickly as we would like, so, um. We're all learning this and whatever support we can provide, so we want to do that. And, uh, I want to thank, um, Lori for her work on the, uh.
Yes.
The art exhibit, Lance, the beautiful. So Jill, just go and kill it.
Oh gracious.
Volunteers, thank you guys so much, uh, you know, this day and time is very difficult for folks, everybody's got a busy schedule. With my business, I have trouble getting the volunteers from, so. Thank you so much for taking the time, we really sincerely appreciate you doing that, and I think these are some good committees to, for our town and. It's a lot of good input, and I'm impressed by everybody's resumes, like, wow, I mean, we're, we've got a town full of talent, and we really appreciate you. You taking the time to do it.
Thank you. So, um, I will just mimic the words of the council members, I mean, it's, it's incredible, I'm. I'm a big believer that your time is your most precious. Thing that you can give to someone else, you know, because you could write a check, you can give money, you can give a thing, but. You have a very limited time, and for you to give your time to something is the best gift, in my opinion, so thank you so much for that. Um, it is hard to find volunteers, as someone that is often looking for volunteers for other. Projects and organizations, it is hard, so we are very thankful. Um, and I will say what Jerry Tully, the former mayor, said to me when I was here being interviewed and appointed to a board, is. That is your gateway to sit up here.
Don't run away now.
Um, so you may have noticed that we have some healthy snacks up here, um, although we didn't eat them, sorry, Jill, but. Um, Jill, Jill is, I'm really pushing more wellness programming for our employees, so thank you for that, in addition to. The other things that you're doing, so, um, I do not want to get back on that scale, um, from the last time you weighed me. Um, but thank you for taking that on, and, um, there's some really great options for the staff, and of course, if we keep. Our people healthy, it's going to save tax dollars, um, by, you know, helping to limit healthcare costs, ultimately, that's the goal. Um, the Mayor's Association meeting, um, with, um, the League of Municipalities was canceled today due to Election Day. Um, and unfortunately, I did have to miss the PTRC Board of Delegates meeting, um, this month or in October. Um, so I don't really have any updates there. I feel like there was something else that I needed to update on, but it's not in your notes, so just kind of go with, it wasn't that important. Unless you remind me of something.
I just, I was able to call the, retreat is eight, uh, planned eight thirty to four thirty. For timing.
Is that a full lunch break for an hour?
That is our squeeze time.
Okay, so maybe we could eight thirty to four and do. Short lunch?
I was thinking that if you talk too much between eight thirty and noon, we'd eat while we worked.
Are you saying I? Okay, but, okay, that's fine. We can probably. We can probably need to do that.
If we stay on schedule, then yes, how's that?
Well, as the moderator for the day, I expect you to keep us on schedule.
Sure.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, everyone, thank you all for being here.